Several run-throughs on the technology, but it is not working perfectly so that the folks that are watching the virtual broadcast can hear what's going on in this room. So this little thing is called a puck.
Puck.
Puck. And it will be, it will be moved to the microphone as you're speaking because that's how people on Zoom will hear, okay? So when this gentleman moves around, that's what he's doing is moving the puck from one microphone to the other. Welcome to the meeting of the 2021 Johnson County Charter Commission. I'm Greg Musso. I'm the Chair of the Commission. It's a 25-member volunteer commission appointed by various, various folks from around the county. This is our rescheduled first public hearing of two public hearings. The second public hearing is anticipated. We're scheduled to be on October 27th, again at 5:30, again in this, in this hotel, presumably in the same room. We've been meeting since March, either virtually or in person, to learn about the county and to be prepared to fulfill our role as a commission. Our meetings are generally the second Monday and the fourth Wednesday of the month. The Johnson County Home Rule Charter was initially adopted by voters in 2020. The charter requires the appointment every 10 years of a 25-member charter commission for purpose of reviewing the charter and considering whether any amendments to the charter should be placed on the ballot for the voters to consider. The charter may be amended only by the voters. The way to put something on the ballot is either through the Charter Commission with 13 votes out of 25 members or by a supermajority vote of the county commission. First of all, I want to thank county staff for all the work that's gone into this. It's not easy to meld the technology between the hotel and what we need for Zoom, so we hope it will continue to work. The charter requires the Charter Commission to hold at least one public hearing. We're going to hold two, at least two. If you want to see any of the past meetings or the agendas or the recordings of the previous meetings, the website is www.charter.joco.gov.org. It is also linked on the county's main website, which is www.joco.gov.org. The website includes future meeting dates, agendas, minutes, and videos of each Charter Commission meeting, as well as a copy of the Home Rule Charter. No proposed amendments have been presented to the commission. At our last meeting, we established November 1 as the, as the relatively firm but not absolute concrete deadline for people to submit, for charter members to submit amendments that could be considered by the commission. And those would then be discussed at our future meetings on November 8th and November 17th, and then two meetings in December. At some point in that, votes would be taken on each of those. Our rules establish that if nine votes are received, then the proposal will receive full consideration. If 13 votes were received, then it would go on the ballot next November, November 2022. We are here for a public hearing tonight. We have over 50 speakers who have pre-registered or who have signed in tonight. So we're going to try to get through those. We will end the public hearing about 7:55 with any cleanup, so we can be added here by 8:00. We have a time limit on when we have the room. Here are quickly the rules. Each speaker will be allotted two minutes. Deputy County Clerk to my left, Linda Sater, will call out the names of the, of the speakers, although they're also have been presented on the board. If you would be ready to go, we have multiple podiums, so if, if you're next and somebody's at this podium, please come up, come on up to the other podium, so we don't lose a lot of time in between speakers. You will see a countdown for two minutes. Virtual speakers should see the same countdown on their monitor. Let's see. We always accept written comments. We've had a lot of written comments on the website. Those are distributed to every Charter Commission member. Every one of our meetings has been recorded. These public hearings are recorded. A number of our commissioners tonight are on, on Zoom. And anybody that was unable to attend or is out of town and without a Zoom link will be able to watch this on the recording. I guess the first thing I should have done was to ask for a roll call of commissioners to make sure we have enough people here. I'm sure we do, but Linda?
Wendy. Thank you. Mike Vane. Mike Vane.
I think he was unavailable.
Karen Brownlee. Thank you. Vicki Charlesworth. Thank you. Jim Dinnings. Thank you. Jane Dirks. Thank you. Jimmy Gauna. Thank you. Tetra Kausch is absent. Randy Hutchins. Randy Hutchins.
Randy Hutchins is available on Zoom. Maybe have it on.
He is on Zoom.
That is correct. He is present on Zoom.
Randy, can you unmute yourself and speak that you are available on Zoom? I'll come back. Chris Island. Chris Island. Okay, absent. Laura Klingensmith. Thank you. Joy Costen. Should be on Zoom. Joy.
Joy is not present on Zoom.
Thank you. Brent, thank you. Thank you. Eric Michelson.
Eric Michelson, present.
Thank you. Ed Peterson.
Ed Peterson, present.
Thank you. Don Ratan.
Don Ratan is present.
Thank you. Leslie Riverola.
Leslie Riverola is present.
Thank you. Don Roberts. Don Roberts. Kyle Russell.
Kyle Russell, present.
Thank you. Paula Swann. She is absent. She had a council meeting tonight. Brenda Sharp. She's, I can, I can see Brenda on Zoom.
Oh, sorry, you cut out. Brenda Sharp, present.
Thank you. Greg Shelton.
Greg Shelton, present.
Thank you. Greg Smith.
Greg Smith is here.
Thank you. Zach Thomas.
Zach Thomas here as well.
Thank you. Chair Musso.
Here.
Randy Hutchins is present as well.
Thank you.
Nineteen and twenty-five are present, so we do have a quorum. We have two business items to consider. First of all, approval of tonight's agenda, which is basically a public hearing. Is there any question or have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting? Motion by Senator Danning. Is there a second?
Brenda Sharp's second.
Councilmember Brownlee. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? No. The agenda is approved. The second item is approval of the minutes from the September 22, 2021 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? And if not, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as published.
So moved.
Was that Mr. McGee?
That was Greg Shelton.
Greg Shelton. Greg, I'll take you as a second. Brett had already moved it here in the room. So moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No. The minutes are approved. We will get to our public hearing just, just very quickly. We're late, so we'll go, probably try to go a little bit past eight if we have more speakers lined up. The order of the speakers is to take those who pre-registered for September 13th, first virtual, and then in person, and then we'll take those who pre-registered for tonight, October 11th, virtual, and then those who pre-registered in person, and then anybody that registered tonight at the door. Again, if you see your name up there and you're next, please go to the open podium. We have three. I would try to avoid the one on the far, my far left, your far right, just because it's going to be harder for people to keep an eye on you. So see if we've got anything else on here before we go. I think we're ready to go. Linda, you call the first. Who is the first speaker? We're going to call Bill Jacobson as the first speaker. Bill wants to make his way. Oh, these will be virtual. That's right.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, Bill, you can hold on for a minute. We're still having some technical issues. Okay, Bill, you are ready to go. You will not see the timer. Will we see it on our screen? I'll set my phone and try to give you a few minutes, a few seconds warning, Bill, if that's okay. Sorry, you will be able to see the timer on your screen.
Okay.
Please give each speaker, please give your name and the city you are from.
All right.
You may proceed.
Good evening. My name is Bill Jacobson. I'm a lifelong resident of Overland Park. I wanted to speak today and echo what many are saying about retaining the voting rights of the people of Johnson County to elect their own sheriff. It is critical that this position is elected by citizens and not have those rights stripped away and given to the Board of County Commissioners to use as an extension of their own office. The Board of County Commissioners and the Sheriff's Office need to continue to be separate. I also wanted to speak to you about a proposal that I'm calling the Voter Awareness Act. I think a majority of people would agree that in order to have a truly representative government in Johnson County, it's critical that voters know what value or political party a candidate supports. Even with more and more social media outlets available to gather information about candidates, it can still be very difficult to determine how a particular candidate will vote on a specific issue, as many of these politicians can avoid questions by simply saying that the question is a political question and this is a non-political seat. This current structure does not allow the voters the ability to determine if the candidate represents their position on many topics. This is exactly what happened to me. Every time I inquired about a candidate's position on many topics in our recent primary election, they simply stated it was a political question and refused to answer the question. So what I'm proposing is this Charter Commission consider making many of these positions party-affiliated. This would ensure that the voters of Johnson County can elect those candidates that more closely align with their own values, and thus giving Johnson County a true representative government at all levels. Thank you.
One thing I want to mention is that in order to get through as many people as possible, if you simply agree with somebody and you can say that, that will save time for other speakers. And I appreciate the applause, but again, that will take more time and it will get more people through. That would be better for everybody, I believe. So next on the virtual is?
Amber Stinger. Amber Stinger.
Thank you. Thank you for giving, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you for giving the community this opportunity to speak. My name is Amber Stinger and I'm a resident of Shawnee. I'm here tonight as President of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County. The League is a nonpartisan grassroots organization that for more than 100 years has fought to protect and strengthen our democracy and ensure full participation of citizens in the process. The Johnson County League advocated strongly for adopting the Home Rule Charter form of government in 2000 and continues to support it as the best available structure of government for Johnson County. An essential pillar of the charter voters approved in 2000 was making county commissioner races nonpartisan. This has served Johnson County residents well in the past 20 years. The adage, "If it isn't broken, don't fix it," definitely applies here. More Johnson Countyans voted in the 2020 general election than nearly ever before, with 77% of total registered voters casting ballots. County commission positions were among the races voters decided in that high turnout year. Nonpartisan elections in our county include governing bodies for 20 city councils and mayors, six school boards, the Water One Board, the JCCC Board of Trustees, and of course, the county. The current nonpartisan system is familiar, familiar to voters and benefits our community in several ways. First, the system better reflects the growing number of voters who are independent. As of August 2021, 26% of all registered voters in Johnson County were unaffiliated with a political party. Second, candidates have to declare their own positions on pressing local issues instead of relying on party planks. And third, I mean, the timer just popped up. Third, races are less polarizing outside the party framework, focusing more on the ability and positions of the candidates than preconceived notions based on party affiliations. And last, it fosters a more collaborative environment among elected officials. Voters knew what they were doing in 2000. Nonpartisan elections work for these all-important county races. We urge you to keep a good thing, Johnson County, going and not mess with the system that is working. Thank you for your time and attention this evening.
Now we have Rene Martinez.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the last name?
Martinez. Rene Martinez. Okay, thank you. We'll go on. Now we have Emily Coleman. Emily Coleman.
Good evening. My name is Emily Coleman and I'm from Spring Hill, Kansas. And there are three main points that I would like to speak to. First, I would like to reiterate four very poignant questions iterated in the Minority Report in the 2010 Charter Commission. One, is this program service or proposal necessary or a good idea? Two, if it is necessary, is it something that the government should be doing? Three, if the government should be doing it, can we afford it? Four, if we can afford it, is it being performed with the maximum proficiency? I think it's imperative to remind voters of Johnson County that we have only had a charter for 20 years and there's no reason that the charter couldn't be dissolved today. As there is no reason that the county positions like the county manager, which hasn't enjoyed a 25% pay increase, as citizens of Johnson County have enjoyed a 25% tax increase, couldn't be returned to an elected position. As we have seen, the consolidation of power and accountability to the Board of County Commissioners alone, as opposed to taxpayers, empowers a status quo that eliminates or limits personal freedom. A charter member recently opposed the chat two that a Board of Health should be formed, composed specifically of stakeholders from the medical community. My question is, how could it be possible for a one-sided board staff with only for-profit medical, for-profit medical fascists to be fairly represented at the rights of citizens of Johnson County over profits of the medical industry? Three, if Commissioner Hazmet wants to live in a place like Seattle, Washington, she should perhaps probably move there. From what I can see, there isn't a particular thing that makes Seattle more desirable than Johnson County, other than coastal access, which we are not going to replicate by appointing our sheriff. To date, an elected constitutional sheriff has been the only check on the Board of Commissioners otherwise runaway superiority complex that has sought to use the pandemic to promote and usher the Johnson County's own version of the Green New Deal. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I remind all people that ultimately, no matter what the county does.
Now we have Tracy Osborne-Holton, and then after that, we will have Lynn Levine. Tracy Osborne-Holton.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony this evening on behalf of the Overland Park Chamber of Commerce and the business community. First, thank you for your service. I served on the Charter Commission in 2011, so I understand the time and energy commitment you're making. It's critical in a growing and dynamic county like ours that we regularly assess our county structure and make any needed recommendations. I want to focus on two issues: elections and whether change is needed in our charter. The first issue, the Overland Park Chamber has long been an advocate for nonpartisan elections. Our members believe this is the best approach to local governance and recently reiterated this in our policy agendas. We believe civility should be one of the cornerstones of our democratic process.
Randy, available to take that week down. Do you want to try to see, make another trip down there to get some corn, drop some corn off?
It is true that potholes aren't partisan. It's also true that the hyper-partisan dysfunctional nature of our state and national politics.
Tracy, would you hang on for just a second?
Yes.
I think, I think we had a Charter Commissioner on, who's on Zoom that was unmuted. Somebody broke in. Could you, I don't know where to tell you to start, but probably 10 or 15 minutes ago.
Did you hear anything of what I said? Do you want me to say it over again?
I don't want you to start over, but that probably.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just start. Okay, I'll just begin with, "We've been an advocate of nonpartisan elections. We believe it's the best approach to local governance, and we've reiterated this in our policy agendas. We believe civility should be one of the cornerstones of our democratic process. We ask that you continue to support nonpartisan elections in Johnson County. While it's true that potholes aren't partisan, it's also true that the hyper-partisan dysfunctional nature of our state and national politics will be even more destructive at the local level where decisions that impact our daily lives are made. We believe nonpartisan elections have served us well in the past and will continue to do so into the future." Our second issue, we do not believe that any structural issues merit changing our county's charter. Therefore, we recommend that no ballot amendments to Johnson County's constitution be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Now we have Lynn Levine. Lynn Levine. Then we will have Allye Sealing. Lynn Levine.
Hi, this is Lynn Levine. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. What, why do we want to change something that is working well? That's one of my questions. The county sheriff position should remain being elected by the voters, as stated in the current Johnson County Charter, and not be appointed by the commission. This has served the people well. Our current sheriff is very well-respected. The sheriff should be accountable to the people and be required to live in Johnson County and have knowledge of the position they are being appointed to. I don't think that Kansas should be following examples from the liberal West Coast. That's not our culture. If the West Coast is simply money and things they like, perhaps we should do the opposite. The definition of democracy is governed by the people, and that's why I think this should be, it should stay the way it is. Now is not the time to change this process. I would love to know the issues and what is prompting the need to make any changes. Thank you for your time.
Now we have Allye Sealing. Allye Sealing. Then we will have Manuel Geteras.
Good evening. Can you hear, good evening. Can you hear me? Hello. Good evening. Hello, my name is Allye Sealing. I apologize for being on Zoom. I would love to be in person with you, but I'm preparing for a school board meeting myself. I am a lifelong resident of Johnson County. I reside in Olathe with my husband and four kids. I am currently a sitting school board member for the Spring Hill School District. This has been an interesting year and a half, to say the least. I would first like to publicly express my gratitude and appreciation for Sheriff Hayden and his assistance and direction this past year. Navigating the pandemic has been a challenge. However, his leadership has been phenomenal. I want to speak with you tonight to encourage you to always keep our local county sheriff position as an elected position. You may or may not be discussing this tonight. Regardless if you are or not, it is worth sharing my strong opposition and that of many others for now and for future, that the elected sheriff never be considered an appointed position by the Board of County Commissioners. I am very data-driven and believe data-driven decisions are imperative. There is no option to make community health and safety decisions without a strong data to support it. With that, there is a reason that 41 states and almost 3,100 jurisdictions across the United States have four-year elected sheriffs. We, the people, have the right to elect who we want to represent us, who we want to enforce the laws, provide law enforcement services, and ensure our public safety. Looking back at this past 19 months, we can clearly see how important a Johnson County sheriff has been in ensuring a checks and balance system across the county. Checks and balances at the very foundation of our great country. The sheriff provides a check and a balance in our county. Having an elected sheriff means he works for the people, not for the Board of County Commissioners. If appointed by the B.O.C.C., they would be under their influence, much like our current health department. If the sheriff is appointed, not only would they answer to the B.O.C.C. instead of the people, they would be subject to politicization, we have clearly seen in our current B.O.C.C. If the sheriff were appointed by them and then answered to them, this would disrupt the important checks and balances. If and when this becomes a topic of discussion, please know that the residents of Johnson County take this very seriously. We would like to see this conversation shut down before it even gets to a potential ballot. The Charter Commission in Johnson County is in place to study the structure of Johnson County government and to make recommendations for improvements. I strongly oppose any changes to our.
Now we have Mutual and General Gutierrez. Then we will have Mason Chukwaball. Manuel and Cheryl Gutierrez.
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi. Yes, this is Manuel and Cheryl Gutierrez. We're from Olathe, Kansas. And yeah, Manuel and I are in agreement with Bill Jacobson and all who have expressed opposition to any proposition to give away our voting rights. We do still live in a republic, which is in favor of freedom and voting rights for all legitimate tax-paying citizens. Thank you.
Mason Chukwaball, and then Michael Kernar. Mason?
Mason is not.
Okay, thank you. Now we will have Michael Kernar, and then we will start in person. We have Randy Hugel. Michael Kernar.
Okay, this is Michael Kernar. I live in Lenexa. George Washington warned us that the government is a useful servant but a fearful master. The last 18 months have proven the truth of that maxim very clearly. Government is a very dangerous entity at all levels. We've seen that even low-level government entities like school boards, city councils, and county commissions can do lots of damage and create economic catastrophes. We've also seen how an elected sheriff helped protect the citizens of the county from some of those arbitrary and foolish demands of the commissioners. An appointed sheriff would have had no choice but to enforce those foolish demands at gunpoint. Even if you did not agree.
We're not able to hear you in the room with interference. Could we come back to you in a few minutes and see if there's a better connection?
Sure thing.
We will not, we will not forget you, but let us, let us go back to you after another speaker or two. Thank you.
I just want to check, Chairman would like you to check to see Rene Martinez or Mason Chukwaball is on yet.
Neither speaker is available on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Now we will start in person, and we have Randy Hugel. She was in person, but she is in person tonight. Randy? Randy, just so that we know, we didn't get started here. Randy will have Victoria Klein in that.
Randy? Okay, I am Randy Hugel. I am from Olathe. And I want to say that I support everything that Bill Jacobson, Chambers, Aspinder, and Emily Coleman have said, as well as Tracy. I'm also wanting to say that I firmly request that we add the Green New Deal to the ballot. We do not support that 100%. We don't have the funds for that, and we have to.
Victoria Klein. Then we will have Van Kausch. Then we will have Scott Kozar. Victoria. Victoria Collin.
I'm right here. Hi, I'm Victoria Collin from Overland Park. I'm trying to figure out how this type of representative government is working for the people of Johnson County. The Charter Commission, Mid-America Area Regional Council, and the Board of County Commissioners. This present government has lawsuits against the Board of County Commissioners, the school boards, businesses. Our Kansas Congress is scrambling to get a special session to alleviate the overreach. A large citizenry is having rights violated against the Kansas and U.S. Constitution. How are these 25 appointed charter members actually helping? We have never organized, we need to organize debate at least four times a year. Citizens allowed to ask questions and interact with debate participants, set up town halls where the B O C C are listening to their citizens' issues and each other. Keep the press at a minimum. Use notify Joe Code to let people know when the opportunity. The county should pay for documentaries that have both sides to a position shown in our local theaters for at least two weeks. Many do not understand the word body politic in the preamble of many state constitutions. The vision in a body politic is to come together to protect our joint commerce, safety, and public well-being. Public health involves bylaws that address proper general rules of public health. There is private and public health care. General public health now needs to really own another person's property, children, and body, none of which is the concern financially in the body politic. More paper newspaper articles do not have equal discussion on the citizens. I have woman tell me that she was on the planning committee for Johnson County back in 1980. They made a beautiful plan. Only to see that when the land developers began to work, it did not look like what the planning committee had decided. The planning committee and citizens were discounted. Are we supposed to bring lawsuits each time a land development company or whoever ignores our voice player of tax evasion? We need to revisit home rule on the ballot. We need to dismantle Midwest Area Regional Council. If this Charter's report sums up that everything is fine with this government, it's been a total waste of time.
Yeah, Scott Bozart. Scott Bozart.
I'm Scott Bozart from Merriam, Kansas. In looking at history and the creation of the Charter Commission, it's abundantly clear government will be government. Our local government proposed and created more government. Johnson County expanded and consolidated power and diverted accountability from, away from the citizenry under the guise of more accountability. Several elected positions like county clerk, treasurer, and recorder of deeds became appointments under the control of the county manager, who's just a gym. Decisions like this certainly help explain why my three-bedroom house was valued like Buckingham Palace last year and Windsor Castle this year. The Home Rule Charter also left open the possibility that we, the people, can be duped out of electing our sheriff and our district attorney. That's insanity. The sheriff is the only law enforcement in the county that is accountable to the citizens of this county. Can you imagine what the past 18 months would have looked like if the sheriff and DA were appointed by the county manager and the Board of County Commissioners? I think some of you can imagine it, and I think some of you like it. If this nonpartisan county controlled the sheriff and district attorney, shutting down small business and forcing masks upon the peasants wouldn't be enough. They would have used the full force to destroy the hairstylist, jailed a local ice cream shop, and half of us in this room would be labeled domestic terrorists. Myself and all the people here are fed up with these backdoor deals and these ideological programs this county is doing in our names. It needs to stop, and you need to be part of the solution.
Now we have Debbie Decker. Debbie Decker. Then we'll have Stephanie Burden and then Dandree Weber. Debbie Decker. Okay, we'll go on to Stephanie Burden, then Dandree Weber, and then Sherrod Collins. Stephanie Burden.
In 2000, home rule versus state governance was adopted by citizens and touted by local leaders as a means for local government to be more transparent, more community involvement, and fit the needs of Johnson County residents. Since then, especially in the last 12 years, groups have formed and hired legal counsel to fight the B O C C. Concerned citizens of Johnson County, the Anhydrous Ammonia Group, subdivisions, major retail chains, et cetera. They have been trying to fill an obvious void of when home rule has run amok. That has been the only way the public has been able to combat what appears to be moves by the board that are in conflict with state law, charter violations, or just blatant abuse. Based on the current charter, I firmly believe the B O C C should be fined for ignoring the resolution on the current county auditor appointment, which states verbatim qualifications. No ambiguity. Shall is the term. It is willfully ignored to this day. Other potential abuses. Should the county of manager receive tens of thousands of COVID money bonuses since being appointed and not being an employee? Should all these high-dollar bonuses have gone through the B O C C approval process since it totaled over 100,000 in aggregate? Did the B O C C violate the charter by basically giving themselves absolute power with the Mark Climate Action Plan over buildings transit by also being the sitting board of health? When the manager, attorney, auditor, and appraiser are appointed, and then the eternity and auditor serve at the pleasure of the board or given raises by the board, have their contracts renewed by the board, will they stand up to the board? And someone had the gall then to say that they wanted to appoint the sheriff. This Charter Commission needs to propose a precise, concrete solution for citizens to have the ability to get answers without invoking Cora, the Kansas Open Records Act, or hiring attorney. You have sitting commissioners who are unable to get information. Elect the county auditor and have them serve at the pleasure of the chair. Two term limits for county commissioners so they cannot get entrenched. Commissioners can be personally liable so they, if they violate the charter. This B O C C needs oversight systematically, has moved to an oligarchy, adopt a plan that has internal checks and balances.
After that, we will have Sherrod Collins, then Teresa Rose, and Dandree Weber. Now we have Sherrod Collins. Sherrod Collins. And we'll have Teresa Rose, and then we'll have Lawrence Sells. Sherrod Collins.
Thank you all for risking your lives to be here this evening. I'm Sherrod Collins. I'm from Overland Park. The U.S. Constitution and the Kansas Constitution begin with, "We, the people," not "we, the governing." Let it be on record that I oppose any change in the Johnson County Charter, specifically speaking to the removal of an elected position and replacing them with appointed positions. Our sheriff must remain elected. We, the people, have elected you to officially carry out the duty of the will of the people of our country, not a government powered by you. You've shown us time and time again over the last year that you are ruling by an authoritative model of hierarchy and empowering yourselves. We have two systems of government existing in our world today. We have a sovereign God-centered nation by which we were founded, and then we have the pagan Marxist communist model by which you're chosen. You are a holy servant, a law-abiding, well-laid into disregard to carry out the will of the people. You're disregarding facts, data, and actual science with regards to COVID-19. Please answer the question why you won't listen to one set of data and facts from the veterinarian, Dr. Ariella, with the Johnson County Health Department. This gives you his manipulative lies, all his fancy charts and graphs, yet you ignore and disregard all the facts, data, and evidence provided by thousands of world-renowned doctors, scientists, epidemiologists, the powers that we are dictating from above with this Nazi-style government. One small example, and I quote, "U.S. Code 200.301, paragraph 8. The federal awarding agency may include program-specific requirements as applicable. These requirements must be aligned with strategic goals, objectives, or performance goals that are relevant to the program." In other words, the feds will give you the money if you do what they say. This is in direct reference to the American Rescue Project Act, in which the state of Kansas received over $5 billion of relief money. The last thing we need is to amend the Johnson County Charter to give you more power to choose from you among the positions of our government. On a Johnson County webcast last week, actually it was about a month ago, before this meeting, Mr. Adler stayed in the sheriff position, would not be up for vote as an appointed position, but the other positions of clerk, registrar, and trustee were just admin positions, insinuating they were not worthy of an elected position. The commissioners need to uphold their oath of office and serve the people, or it will be our duty to remove you and replace you.
Then we will have Lawrence Sells. Then we will have Teresa McCarthy. Teresa Rose.
Hi, my name is Teresa Rose, and I live in Olathe, Kansas. First of all, I want to thank you, each and every one of you. I know this is a volunteer position, and I know it's not easy sitting here on this side of the room. I wanted to be more personal with my presentation. I wanted to talk about public perception of safety. When I was a teenager, I moved to Johnson County with my parents, and my dad had gotten a job in Kansas City, Missouri. But they chose Johnson County on purpose because of the schools, because of the community, because of the low crime rate, and because of the safety. We have enjoyed living here. I've enjoyed raising my children in the same community. When Commissioner Hanslick proposed that we make this change to the office of the sheriff, she mentioned King County and Washington State. And what I don't think she realizes, and I don't know if many people realize this, King County is not doing well. There's a lot of people leaving that county because they don't feel safe and because the crime rate is actually going up. People are leaving in droves. And what I do know is that criminals can take, criminals take advantage when there's a yes man in office, in the office of sheriff. And what we all have, I agree with everyone that everything, everything that everyone has said, because we do need a constitutional sheriff. We need someone who will be a buffer between us and the government. We need someone that works for us, be the people, and we have the right to elect that said person. So, and so I'm very thankful that we have a constitutional sheriff. And actually, I also wanted to say that there could be a worse time to make this decision. In the current climate of this country, of damaged confidence in both local and federal governments, this would create a devastating blow to the community at large. So we, the people, are asking you to uphold the position of an elected sheriff in Johnson County to create a place where people will want to work, live, and raise their children. Thank you.
Now we have Lawrence Sells and Teresa McCarthy. After those two, we will try and take it back to Michael Kernar on the virtual. Lawrence Sells.
Teresa McCarthy. My name is Teresa McCarthy. I am from Olathe, Kansas. I'm surprised to find myself here this evening addressing this appointed Charter Commission. I'm here to say very clearly that no appointed official ever has the right to do away with an elected office or officer. My vote put Sheriff Hayden in office. These votes of citizens elected him, and each vote represents a voice. My voice will not be silenced or done away with by anyone who is simply appointed. Appointment is not of the people, for the people, or by the people. An elected office official is, unless there's fraud. Janie Hanslick has gone on record saying, and I quote, "Some people don't feel well represented by Sheriff Hayden and by District Attorney Steve Howe." She continues, "I hear from constituents that are very concerned about the hyper-partisanship they see in those positions. First of all, words like 'some' and 'very' are abstract and nonmeasurable. The statements appear to be nothing more than hyperbole. Voters have demonstrated their support of Sheriff Hayden by voting for Hayden." Hanslick wants Johnson County to emulate King County, where Seattle, Washington is. If I wanted to live in that political chaos and disorder, I'd move there. In 2019, 60,000 citizens of Washington State exited their state. From July 2020 to July 2021, 125,000 citizens had less, left Washington State, stating unsafe conditions for their children and their personal property. William Waters is a name we need to remember. In 1652, the colonists were the first to elect a sheriff. Our nation has been built on elections. This is the grassroots of our democracy. When we stop electing a sheriff and begin appointing a sheriff, we live under the domination of tyranny. I lived eight years in Communist China, eight years in the People's Republic of China. I know what it is like to have appointed law enforcement. We cannot go that route.
Now we're going to try to go to Michael Kernar again on virtual. Michael Kernar.
Okay, here I am. So, Michael Kernar, Lenexa. George Washington warned us that the government is a useful servant, but if-
Michael?
Yes? You're still not hearing me?
We, we can hear Michael on Zoom.
Shall I continue or?
Continue.
Just gonna hold on for a moment.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay. George Washington warned us that the government is a useful servant but a fearful master. The last 18 months have proven the truth of that maxim very clearly. Government is a very dangerous entity at all levels. We've seen that even low-level government's entities like school boards, city councils, county commissioners can do lots of damage and create economic catastrophes. We've also seen how an elected sheriff helped to protect the citizens of the county from some of those arbitrary and foolish demands. An appointed sheriff would have had no choice but to enforce those foolish demands at gunpoint. Even if you do not agree that the various mask distancing and business shutdown rules were idiotic, you must see that another entity that stands in the way of enforcement of any future even more foolish rules is a good thing to have in place. And if your new charter includes making the office of sheriff appointed, you will have a very strongly determined group of citizens campaigning for rejection. Most important job of government at any level is to protect the freedom of the citizens. If that government with whatever excuse decides to abridge the rights of its citizens, we want as many obstacles to that as possible. Freedom to make your own decisions is always the best answer, no matter what the question. Don't do anything to interfere with that principle. Thank you.
Thank you. First and again to Daryl McCarthy. Then we'll have Daniel Austin. Then we'll have Rebecca Schiphol. Daryl McCarthy.
I'm Daryl McCarthy. I live a few blocks away in Brighton's Landing here in Olathe. I am an academic, and I serve as Director of the European Academic Network. I've lived in Johnson County since 1979, and during those years, I've traveled all over the world in my work. And it's kind of maybe the opportunity to observe two fundamental requirements for a flourishing society, that is, rule of law and representative government. And all of us who have been in leadership and management have had the opportunity to learn that without accountability, work standards and performance suffer dramatically. Elections provide ultimate accountability. And with the current climate of rising crime across the nation and defunding of law enforcement, making the sheriff an appointed position is one giant step closer to making the sheriff just another government bureaucrat. Instead of making the sheriff an appointed position, we actually need to move back to make more county officers such as the auditor and trainee. Thank you all for your attendance.
Austin, Daniel Austin. Then we'll have Rebecca Schiphol. And Linda Schurfer. Daniel Austin.
My name is Daniel Austin. I reside in Merriam, Kansas. And it's very concerning to me that having the sheriff made into an appointed position instead of an elected one is even up for consideration. But then again, I shouldn't be surprised because so much has happened behind the scenes to give more power to the government, and most of us have been asleep up until this point. Well, now we're awake, and we're here to address the obvious issue, which is keeping the sheriff elected. But I want to take it a step further, which is to say that any appointed positions that were originally elected by the people need to be reversed- need to be reversed back to that option.
Yeah.
This country is run by the will of the people, and it needs to stay that way. Appointing officials for political offices allows for corruption and the government to act outside their authority in multiple different ways and have no accountability whatsoever. This cannot keep happening. The elected body needs to represent the will of the people, and turning elected positions into appointed ones so that future replacements can do your dirty work for you is nothing short of oppression and charity.
Yeah.
I fully realize that corruption also takes place with elected officials, which is why I turn my attention to the people and say, "Do your research before you go into votes, not just for presidential elections, but all elections, especially local." I would argue that local positions are even more important than presidential elections because everything starts at the local level. If you want great things to happen, you need the most honest, courageous, ethical people who will stand up and do the right thing. It's by starting at the local level that our country will be better served nationwide as time goes on.
Then we will have Rebecca Shipley. Then we will have Linda Schruber, and we have Rebecca Shipley.
Hi, Rebecca Shipley, Olathe resident. In regards to should the sheriff be appointed instead of elected, let me make clear, there is no time in a constitutional republic that this notion be entertained. The sheriff is the highest authority in this county. He has the authority to deny enforcement and laws from corrupt federal, state, and local governing bodies. Sheriff Hayden has been doing that for the past 18 months and longer. He is our county's best leader, and that really upsets the five on the squad of the VOCC.
Yeah.
The Johnson County VOCC, specifically Janie Hanslick, is attempting to decrease this protection by Hayden by attempting to move the office to appointed, making the VOCC the highest office in the county. Over the past 18 months, that dais has proven that they are incapable of upholding the oath they took in that office. They are incapable of upholding the rights of business owners, landowners, and individual citizens of this county. They have grossly overstepped their authority and are attempting to grab more. For Mrs. Hanslick to suggest that this move is in the community's best interest is malicious and spiteful. This would be nothing more than a power grab by this corrupt VOCC, and the notion needs to be abolished here and now. Furthermore, I ask this charter, like many before me, that we should be looking for ways to decrease the power of the VOCC. We should be looking at making current appointed positions like the Director of Health into an elected position.
These departments need to be accountable to the citizens of this community and not to the corrupt, power-hungry body of the commissioners. Thank you, and especially thank you to the six that stayed at the last meeting. You did well. With my utmost respect that you would even listen to the people of this community, which
is what you volunteered to do, and I praise you. Thank you.
And April Ramus. Linda Schruber. April Ramus. Now we'll try for Neil Melton, Daniel Renard, and John Holland. Neil Melton. Neil Melton. Daniel Renard.
My name, my name is Dan Reno. I'm a 25-year resident of Shawnee. I also attended the September 13th meeting, which really turned into a mess. I want to first by start saying that I really want to thank Sheriff Hayden for his dedication and outstanding performance as sheriff.
Yeah.
And I'd like to include all of his staff, policemen, or patrolmen, everybody in the offices and everything else in that same state. I too would like to thank the commissioners that stayed after everybody else walked out last time. Having you stay, the six of you, and being able to listen to our concerns meant a lot to everybody in that room. And I just want to thank you. For those that didn't stay, you would have seen, like you've seen tonight, a lot of really heartfelt messages. There was a lot of good speeches. Unfortunately, they weren't filmed, or at least not professionally. I hear there's a film out there. But you missed a lot of information. Let's get a little bit dirty. It's my opinion right now that you have already, many of you, made your decision. And that's unfortunate. Moving our times from three minutes to two does not make you listen any faster. This radical proposal, in my opinion, is no more than a hack job to take away a right to vote, period. And we can't have that. It's been decades since we've had a liberal in the seat of the Johnson County Sheriff. If you can't win in the ballot box, then force this kind of underhanded plan.
Yes.
Okay? There's no way we can have this.
Christopher, wrap up.
Thank you. I've got one more statement. In closing, after listening and being in that September the 13th meeting, I'd like to extend to you the same level of respect that you gave us. So with that.
Then we will have Beth Teeger. John Holland. Richard Fetterman. Stephen Snitz. Sid Mitchell. Sheila Albers. Stephen Snitz.
Have I got this? Okay. People have already suggested what I was going to suggest, so I'll just fifth the motion or sixth the motion. We don't want any more nonpartisan elections. Okay? We want our officials to be elected, including the ones that have already been changed to partisan. We want it back. Okay? We want to be able to vote. And the reason is appointed officials are not directly responsible to the citizens. Elected officials are. And as to the issue of nonpartisanship, it's been used as a weapon. That label allows the intentional misuse of language to confuse voters about candidates' positions on issues. I'm one of these people that walks doors for candidates in elections, and I have heard the following over and over and over. I've walked 6,000 doors. I can't believe it myself. I can't tell them apart. How do I tell who to vote for when they all sound alike? This is what you get when they hide behind nonpartisanship.
Yeah.
As, as citizens, over the last 20 months, or whatever, we've had the COVID BS.
Yeah.
We now, we now understand, we don't have any trust anymore in our elected officials. We now understand that we, the citizens, have to watch what they are doing and report on it to others. If we don't have the ability to vote them out of office when they misbehave, that is a sin on our creation of our country, and it has to be stopped. So basically, we're saying, nonpartisan elections are out and elections are in, not nominations by a bureaucrat. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sheila Albers. Sheila Albers. Then we will have Sheila Barkowski. Do we have Sheila Albers? Sheila Barkowski, Dallas Guthrie, and Ronald Garvey. Sheila Barkowski.
Hi, my name is Sheila Barkowski, and I live in Overland Park. First, I want to thank and acknowledge those members of the commission that stayed after the last public meeting, after the last public meeting had been canceled. I was so impressed by their action that I took the time and the effort to personally attend and speak before the Johnson County Board of Commissioners to acknowledge and thank them. Per one of the commissioners, a commission member that stayed to hear us out, the idea of making the county sheriff an appointed position was a suggestion floated by one commission member alone and had little or no support among the other members. Since I don't know if that's true or not, I am here to voice my opposition to changing the office of county sheriff from its currently elected status to an appointed one, and would vote against any measure should it make it to the ballot. As several speakers that evening pointed out, there are only two other counties within the country that do not elect their county sheriff. There is a reason for that, and at the heart of that reason is a healthy distrust of government. You would have to be a hermit not to see that distrust is growing precisely because of the actions like this. If it is seen as one more nail in the coffin of a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. Thank you for the opportunity.
Then we have Dallas Guthrie, Ronald Garvey, Carolyn Cornelius. Dallas Guthrie?
Yeah, John's going to speak.
On who's going to have?
Dallas Guthrie.
Okay. Can you please announce your name, please? Thank you.
My name is John Purdue, and I'm a lifelong area resident. And I'm not, say again?
Yeah.
I'm a lifelong area resident. I'm not an eloquent speaker. A lot of the people up here have already conveyed what I want to say, but I do have something I do want to put out. And that is, I stand with Sheriff Hayden and the men and women of the Johnson County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah.
I firmly stand behind the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas. I remember my oath I swore to support, obey, and defend the Constitution, and that I have the courage to hold myself accountable for my own actions. I have the strength to withstand unethical pressure, fear, or danger, and that I answer to the people that I serve and not a government entity. Thank you.
And we have Ronald Garvey, Carolyn Cornelius, Stan Erwin, Ronald Garvey. Stan Erwin. Catherine Andrews. Catherine Andrews.
With that. With that, we are through. Everybody pre-registered, any form for September 13th. And we have some speakers left that pre-registered for tonight, as well as some folks that signed up tonight, or anybody to take, I think, given the number left, we can take a 10-minute break, so our close capture can rest our fingers, and then we can all take a break. Restrooms are around the corner that way, and I think there's some toward the lobby. We'll be back here at, we'll be back here at seven o'clock. So 13 minutes, seven o'clock, please.
And I've got to make an announcement.
So I need this. We will reconvene the meeting of the Charter Commission after a short break. It is 7:03 PM. Linda, you have an announcement?
Yes.
We have additional speakers that are in person. At this point in time, we need to start using this podium over here. The one in the middle, for, it's working with our technology. So thank you.
Go ahead and start.
Okay, now we have Al Osterhaus. Al Osterhaus.
My name's Al Osterhaus. Yes, he's like, hold it close. My name's Al Osterhaus. I live in Miriam. And Ernest Hemingway, when asked about his bankruptcy, when asked about his bankruptcy, replied, "At first, it was gradual, then it was sudden." Red close. "At first, it was gradual, then it was sudden." Let us not pass laws or enact policies that will, one day, prompt our children and grandchildren to ask, "When did we lose our freedom?" To which you'll reply, "At first, it was gradual, then it was sudden." So based on all these issues that we talked about, we'll talk about the sheriff. The sheriff position must remain elected, not appointed, because we don't want to tell our children and grandchildren we lost our freedoms first gradually, then sudden. Thank you.
Now we'll have Dave Owen, then Laurel Austin, then Michael Socora. Dave Owen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Dave Owen, and I lived in this county for 73 years and currently live in Lenexa. I appreciate being able to share my thoughts here this evening on an issue that I consider to be of utmost importance, not only for Johnson County, but for every county in the state. By way of introduction, I'm a former state senator and lieutenant governor of Kansas. I've been around here long enough when I remember that Johnson County was a bastion of good government, primarily because we elected partisan, partisan elections, and they were responsible to the people who elected them. And I, I would hope that someday we can go back to that in every office in, in the county. I'm troubled by the movement, as many others have been, to make the Johnson County sheriff an appointed position. I'm no stranger to law enforcement, having served on the Overland Park Civil Service Commission in the past that selected the officers to serve and were responsible for their promotions. I also, when I served in the state senate, was responsible for the budget of the state prison system. And by way of a connection to the sheriff's office, when I first ran for office in 1968, and my partner in traveling around the county to try to get elected was Sheriff Fred Allenbrand, in his first attempt to run for office as well. So I know this county pretty well. Government is best when it's close and responsible to the people. Having the county commission appoint the sheriff rather than being elected by the people will be a mistake at the highest order. Public safety is too important to have a sheriff who is directed and second-guessed by others who may have a different agenda. The next step in this progression is a move to defund the police and the sheriff's office and give the power of law enforcement budget to individuals whose priority may not be public safety. The people of this county have elected outstanding sheriffs from the beginning, and as members of this commission, you have an enormous impact on county public policy. I encourage each of you to make it known where you stand on electing the sheriff and defunding the, the police department, so the people know where you stand. And I respectfully request that you do not support the recommendation to put appointing the sheriff of Johnson County on the ballot. Thank you.
Laurel Austin. Then we'll have Michael Socora. And Linda Stenber. Laurel Austin.
Hello, my name is Laurel Austin, and I live in Lenexa. I'm here to address the consideration of having our sheriff changed from an elected position to an appointed position. We've already witnessed, starting March 11th, 2020, a total tyrannical, out-of-touch, overreaching, power-grabbing, grabbing government. To make this position an appointed one would leave no checks and balances, to take away the will of the people who this government is supposed to serve. We, the people, are not to serve you. You are to serve us, and our sheriff elected, keep our sheriff elected. He is the only thing standing between us citizens and a tyrannical, overreaching government. Let's take this a step further. There have been positions that have already been changed from elected to appointed. Those need to revert back. And if September 13th is any indication of what a charter is about, it should be dissolved. One more thing, let's delete that Green New Deal. That's a backlog of law enforcement. This wonderful county, now is not the time to stay silent. Now is the time to speak up. Even if it's uncomfortable, even if it's awkward, do the research, be informed, and go out and vote in your local elections. What do we say to Satan? Not today.
Yeah.
Now we have Michael Socora, Linda Stenber, and Cheryl Marquise.
Michael Socora? Linda Stenber?
My name is Linda Stenber. I'm a 73-year resident of Johnson County, Kansas, and I am so proud of the eloquence of all of these patriots here tonight. I don't think I can say anything any better, other than on the issue of nonpartisan. What have you got to hide? I think partisan should be how we elect our people, and everybody needs to know where every candidate is coming from. Thank you.
Now we have Cheryl Marquise. Then we will start with Marsha O'Neil, Anna Phan O'Trump. Cheryl Marquise.
Thank you, my name is Cheryl Markey, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Before I start though, I wanted to say I spoke with Vicky during the break, and she had mentioned to me, and I think it's very important, I think everybody would agree, someone was going to say tonight, among you all, that it's not a done deal, and there are things that need to be considered. And considering what's been going on in this last year in our federal government, I think we, the people, would like to know if our voices are really being heard, or if this is just for show. Exactly. Exactly. So we would like to hear from you tonight, please, before we leave, to let us know where you are standing. And I am not an eloquent speaker, but I love the voices of the people that I heard here tonight. They reflect my heart completely. And I noticed in our preamble for Kansas, "We, the people of Johnson County, Kansas, in order to avail ourselves of the benefits and responsibilities of home rule powers to create a county government to serve our present and future needs and to permit the people of this county to make changes in our own government, do, under God, adopt this home rule charter and any alternative sections of articles or articles as determined by the electorate." And I've read a lot of the sections in here, and you all have a great deal of power and a great deal of responsibility on your heads. And we appreciate that, but more than that, because we, the people, have elected you, and we, the people, are paying you out of our hard-earned money. We want for you to hear our voices and know how concerned we are. We have nothing against you as people. What we want is our United States back, of the people, by the people, and for the people that was given to us, not given to us. And I know that this government, our federal government, we're not woke, we're awakened. And we know what's going on.
Linda, can you wrap up?
Yes, sir. Yes. And just want you to know that we want our sheriff to be elected, because if he's appointed, he's just one more piece of the pie that the federal government has taken away from the states, little by little. Thank you.
Now we have Marcia O'Neil, then Anna Phan O'Thun, and John Perdue. Marcia O'Neil.
Yes, my name is Marcia O'Neil. I live in Lenexa. The sheriff should be elected by the citizens of Johnson County. This election should be by paper ballot only, with secure, transparent receipts, as well as any future elections. If that vote is compromised by fraud and no action is taken to correct it by a full forensic audit, then the citizens of Johnson County will select our own protector, a Johnson County Lillisha.
Now we have Anna Phan O'Thun, then it'll be John Perdue, and then Dr. Ronald E. Wilson. Anna Phan O'Thun.
Good evening, hi. My name is Anna Phan O'Thun, and I am a resident of Overland Park. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a voter. I'm DAR, and I'm also a patriot. I want to, I agree with many, most of the perspectives and the opinions that you've heard from my fellow patriots tonight. But I want to reiterate some comments or talk about process. The process that you all are taking to come up with your recommendations, to, that you want to put forward to the ballot, and the decisions that you make. And while you are appointed by various people in our county, I want you to remember and think about the voice of the people, what you've heard tonight. And for those of you that were appointed by commissioners, it's your job to take back what you're hearing from the people to those commissioners to make sure that our voice is heard, that we're relying on you to do that. One of the questions I have for you, beyond the two minutes that you're giving a handful of residents to share their perspective, what additional research are you gathering? How else are you hearing the voice of the people? And I would also like transparency into what that is. So I don't know that hearing from a couple hundred people over the course of two meetings, two minutes each, is enough for you to really understand what the people are saying. Or maybe it is. I also would be looking for transparency into whose interest is served by your recommendations and your decisions. To think about that. So you guys know, and we all know, things are changing out there. And I really urge this Charter Commission to not be fooled that the people are not watching and we're not listening, because we are, and we're gaining momentum. The people want fewer powers for the county government, and we want more of a voice in the decisions that are made on our behalf. And that's what this Charter Commission is about. Thank you.
We have John Perdue, then Dr. Ronald E. Wilson, and then Eric Hany. John Perdue. Now we have Dr. Ronald E. Wilson.
Thank you, and it's a joy to be able to address you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for your hard work. I am Ronald E. Wilson, and I am a resident of Olafah, Kansas. And I'm a very active member of one of the political parties. Anyhow, I rise to lend my support to those who believe in the continuing election of all of those officers who be our servants in government. Elected officers, much more important and valuable than those that are appointed who cease to be leaders and only be functionaries. I believe we need to have elective officers who are not subservient to the governing commission, but who are servant to the people and feel that that is a major premise that we need always to uphold. I propose, Mr. Chairman, that the, that this group take a good, close look at those places on the ballot where, in your commission, where you can make significant changes. We need to have elected offices in those departments that are not just necessarily the sheriff, he must be elected, and the district attorney, but also the other offices that are just as vitally important. The director of deeds, the keeper of deeds, the one that does the accounting and all of the other important and valuable tools that we have in our democracy. This is important, and we're here to speak up. I remember a great poem that said, "I am one, I am only one, but I am one. I cannot do everything, but I can do something. And because I can't do everything, I will not shirk the responsibility to do the something that I can do." I think you need to know that if this proposal should go through, the whole thing will go down to defeat at an election of the electors of this Johnson County. Thank you very much.
Now we have Erica Hany, then Scott Moser, then Charlie Poe. Erica Hany.
Hi, I'm Erica Hany. I live in Overland Park. It's one place I've seen represented here tonight. I'm actually appalled. I've never been to one of these meetings. I'm appalled that we're even thinking about making the DA and the sheriff appointed. I'm also appalled at the things going on in the county, especially with the Green New Deal. I had no idea that I had elected Mark on the ballot. I didn't see him. And when I went and read their Green New Deal proposal on their website, it literally read like a communist man's fespo. It had everything but comrades in regard to distribution of wealth. There's things going on, people are waking up, and people are going to take their hair back. Thank you.
Now we have Scott Moser, Charlie Poe, Steve Klein. Scott Moser.
Hi, I appreciate you all being here and listening. Or are you? That's my question. I'm running for city council in Overland Park. And over and over, I see elected officials sitting there, listening to what people are saying supposedly, but doing nothing about it. There is one thing that I've taken from this meeting tonight, is that everybody is telling you and suggesting to you, partisanship aside, that the voice of the people needs to be heard and that the sheriff needs to be in elected position. You need to hear that, not just listen, but hear and act accordingly. One thing I can tell you is I have a history with law enforcement. My son, Mike, gave his life to Overland Park a year and a half ago. Mike Moser. He died for a city doing what he loved to do, but at the same time enforcing and upholding the laws of our city and our county. And I will tell you that he was unencumbered in that, when he exercised his job. The sheriff cannot be beholden to anyone. When people say and use the word "appointed", to me, I hear "beholden". I hear that there be hell to what that person wants. I would hope that you have the fortitude and the honesty and integrity to do what you know is right. The sheriff is our first, our first layer of the Constitution to do what's right for the people, and we need to stand up to that.
Now we have Charlie Poe, Steve Klein, and I think Renee Hudson. So we'll have Charlie Poe.
Good evening, my name is Charlie Poe. I'm from Western Johnson County. So these guys back here at the back of the room, they're my second line of defense. I'm the first. So we thank you guys. I just really wanted to focus tonight on what you guys are doing. And I didn't even know this was coming. And I got a letter and realized that you guys were stealing my vote. I'm a Christian, I'm a faithful Christian. I'm a family man. I've earned, I've had jobs in this county. I've created jobs in this county. I've started farms in this county. And I'm a retired military for 22 years. All three of my kids are serving right now. And you guys are going to, like a thief in the night, steal their vote. They've earned that vote. I've earned that vote. They've all earned that vote. It is not yours to steal. I met Sheriff Hayden in a hate field before he ever became sheriff. I don't know him very well, but I know that these guys do three things. They use common sense, they use integrity, and they have an even application of the law across the citizens. That's what we want. We don't care what you all think we should want. I am not broken. I do not need your approval. I am not Britney Spears. I do not need your conservatorship. I do not need it. And I do not want it. No, thank you. These are good guys. And we put them there, and they're loyal to us for a reason. They answer to the people for a reason, not to you. That was set up that way originally, and it's worked for, what, 150 years? I think it'll work now. Without any problem. We are waking up. I had no idea you guys were doing this. This is madness. And the rest of the county is going to wake up, as well as the rest of the state. It's insane. And I'm ashamed of you thieves in the night. That's it.
Now we have Steve Klein. Steve Klein. Then we'll have Renee Hudson and George Mailleben. Steve Klein.
Yes, Steve. We, the people, it's a very, it's a cliche, maybe, I don't know. I sense division here. Is it like us versus them? What is the game that's being played here? We, the people, we are all we, the people. Compassion needs to set in and instill in all of us. And I believe it is. I believe there's a whole lot of people out here that are here because they hear, they care. You guys are here because you care. We all care. We are all we, the people. When I walked in here, I got this piece of paper. Interesting, because some of us step over the line. Take back Johnson County, Kansas. Are you sick of the county commissioners ignoring your constitutional rights? Are you ready to put an end to the unethical and co-parenting behaviors by Johnson County leaders? Are you ready to sign a recall petition? Our group was formed to work on recalling Johnson County officials who continue to vote for such controversial issues as, and controversial issues. I'm not going to go with masking children. Seriously. That's emotions, there's none even a question. I mean, come on. There's tons and tons of education to get out there. But they've chosen to pick two out. Jeanette Hanslick and Shirley Alden-Brand. They're calling for a recall. We have 90 days to collect 20,000 signatures in each district. You must be registered Kansas voter within the targeted district to sign your petition. It's interesting that we, the people, are having to come up with stuff like this. And then our forefathers put forth to us, Article 5 of the Constitution, allows the states to call a convention of states to propose constitutional amendments to limit federal spending, debt, and regulations. Amendments can put big government back in its constitutional box and restore power to the state of the people. We are getting educated. Let's all get educated together and maintain, we, the people, stop the vision. We are a great country. Let's maintain the greatness of our country. Thank you, guys, all. You're in a position, you were put there by commissions, other people, I don't know. You're making decisions. We ask the chicanery of our Lord to come upon.
And I think this is Renee Hudson. They signed up tonight. Last name is Hudson. Either Renee or Renee Hudson. 11641 Knox Street. Okay, thank you. Now we have George Mailleben. George Mailleben.
Good evening. My name is George Mailleben. I'm a new resident to Olafah. We, the people, you know, several people here have made that same comment, or at least used that phrase. And one of the things that is most disheartening for me as an 80-year-old man is to see what is happening by way of a separation between we, the people, and the politicians who seem now, in so many ways, to be products of it, an education system that is appalling. I think we all could agree on that we're seeing things that are, and we're getting the results. The seeds have been sown, and now we are reaping the problems. And my comment to you folks, as somebody that lived in Minnesota, I have seen government in a different light. And I'm going to tell you that at least from what I see here and some of the comments that I've heard tonight, I'm encouraged, as a new resident. I'm concerned. You know, I have been involved in politics. My dad and I served in Republican circles in Minnesota. We were on State Central Committee. We saw the problems in trying to get good candidates to put their name on the ballot. But I'm going to tell you that I would far sooner have people elected than I would have. than I would have products of back rooms. And too often, those back rooms and those people who are now occupying relatively high posts, perhaps not here in the state. I'm not that familiar with all of the ins and outs and the politicians here. But I'm going to tell you that the reality is, whenever they sink to the depths of some, while we see it on a national basis. And when it sinks that deep, all of a sudden, we get the products that are not very wealthy, to say the least, they're not noble. We would expect that somebody like a sheriff be somebody that is responsible, responsible to us. And I know of no other better way than to have somebody brought to the forefront to run for election and face us on a ballot. I don't like the idea of anything going on in back rooms. And that's what politics is all about. It's not what happens in the front, it's not what is shown on the back. Whenever we see the literature coming from politicians, it's what happens in the back rooms that is disheartening. I'd like to add one other thing. I've talked to a few of the police officers here, the sheriff's deputies. For all of us, as we go out, you know, I would encourage you to do something as simple as to say thank you. You know, this is becoming a nation with problems in police forces that are absolutely monumental. I have friends who are either retired or active police officers right now. And for all of those people who don the uniform and go out and protect us, thank you. And I think that it's appropriate that we do as much as we can for them. And it can be as simple as this. It can be a shake of the hand, and it may be, if you see them in a restaurant, buy their meal for crying out loud. Thank you.
Thank you all, all of those of you who attended, whether live here in person or by Zoom. We have gone through all the registered speakers and those who registered tonight. There will be another registration opportunity on the website for the October 27 hearing. Similar fashion, where we will take those by Zoom first, those who pre-register for in-person next, and those who register the night of October 27. Again, that meeting is scheduled for 5:30 PM, just as tonight. I do want to clarify a couple things that I heard tonight, because I thought I said it at the start of the meeting. This commission is appointed. 25 volunteers appointed by a variety of people. And I want to make sure that you understand and the public understands the interests that are, that have the right to appoint under the state statute and under the Charter. The state legislature, three members were appointed by the Kansas State Senate delegation from Johnson County. Three members were appointed by the Kansas House of Representatives, who are in Johnson County. Each political party, Republican and Democrat, received two appointments. The Johnson County Board of County Commissioners received eight appointments, two by the chair and one each by each of the six district commissioners. The Johnson County chambers collectively were entitled to appoint two people. The Johnson County cities were entitled to appoint three people who are elected mayors of those cities. And the Johnson County Planning Commission, for the unincorporated areas of the county, appointed two representatives to the Charter Commission. So that is the statutory makeup of this commission. As I said, we will hold our second commission public hearing on October 27. I heard some comments that I think were directed at the county commissioner. We are not paid, we are volunteers. We've been giving four to five hours a month for eight months to learn about the county, to listen to the county. With respect to transparency, please go to the Charter Commission website, charter.joegogun.org. Every meeting agenda is published there. Every set of minutes, once approved, is published there. Every meeting recording is there, if you would like to watch anything and everything that happened. The presentations that were made by various departments of the county are posted there. The Charter, Home Rule Charter itself, is posted there, if you haven't had a chance to review it. Again, our process is that by November 1st, we're asking Charter Commission members to submit any proposed amendments that they would like the commission to consider. The commission will then consider those after our two public hearings. And sometime in November and December, November meetings, November 8th and November 17th, they will be virtual and in-person. We will consider and allow the proponent of each amendment to make a presentation as to why. And then we will take an initial vote to see if it receives nine votes from the commission to go on to a longer discussion, debate about that proposed amendment. Ultimately, if it reaches the second point, a vote will be taken and it requires 13 votes to be placed on the ballot, again, next November. This commission does not make any decisions, one way or the other, on the issues that were discussed tonight, other than a decision about whether or not to place him on the ballot. So that is the process going forward. I appreciate everybody that was here tonight. As to whether we've heard and listened, you will be the judge of that after, when we discuss the events. I was praying very carefully on the city council to listen carefully with an open mind to all the public comments and all the public hearings were completed. And for that reason, I think all of us up here will wait and see what we hear by October 27, what written comments are presented on the website, where everyone has a right to submit written comments. And then we will discuss and debate any proposed amendments in November or in December. We have a deadline to submit a written report by the end of January 2022, I believe. I'm looking around, I'm not sure.
End of February.
End of February. We do not anticipate taking that long. And I'm hoping that by the end of the year, we will know what the votes were on any proposed amendments that will simply be working on a written report. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Kyle Russell, sent by Karen Randle. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No. That motion carries. We will adjourn. Thank you all for coming. Drive safely.
Thank you all.